First on the agenda for consent items are members of the November 20th, 2017 regular board meeting, minutes of the December 16th, 2017 study session, and minutes of the December 16th, 2017 special board meeting. Unless there's objection, does anyone mind if we combine those with pro book? Are there any questions about the minutes of any of those three meetings? Any corrections? Any issues? In that case, is there a motion to approve the consent items one, two, and three, November 20th, December 6th study session, and December 6th special board meeting?
So.
Motion made by Sandy.
Second.
Second by Rick. All in favor of approving the consent items one, two, and three, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Financial reports, some of those will want to break down.
Yeah, I was gonna do one, two, and three together if that's okay.
I'm gonna ask the board members if they have an objection to us doing one, two, and three together, and if they do, we move them separately. If they don't move them together, would they like to do the last resolution separately? Is there objections doing on the funds reports, I'm sorry, on the financial report approval of claims, payroll, and funds report, doing those all together? In that case, are there any questions, additions, deletions, and I'll let you go through them. Please.
Of course. So this evening we have claims docket numbers 12,463 through 12,642 totaling $1,083,311.32. We have three payrolls, the 11/24/2017 payroll totaling $501,148.89. We have the December 8th payroll of $435,864.80. And mainly for informational purposes only, is the December 15th, 2017 tag distribution was a payroll total of $47,145.46. Since we have all the payrolls listed on here, just thought it would be a little more transparent to list that one as well. On the funds report, general fund started at $569,141.58. We had $1,083,631.28 worth of receipts. Expenses for the month were $1,096,124.59, leaving us an ending balance of $516,648.89. General, I'm sorry, debt service fund started with $2,262,279.72. We had $9,588.40 worth of receipts. Expenses for the month were $530.56, leaving us an ending balance of $2,271,337.56. Capital projects fund started with $486,259.24. We had $5,130.53 worth of receipts. Expenses for the month were $56,227.72, leaving us an ending balance of $435,045.5.
Val, on that one, I had a question.
Mm-hmm.
That's probably just a typographical error, but in the year-to-date expenditures then for...
Oh, I see it. Yep, you're right.
And I guess it would be 1130 instead of 1131, but yeah, it just says $56,000 for the year. That'd be awesome.
That is a typo. Thank you for pointing that out. So yep, it would be the $1,039 plus the $56,000. So my errors, I'll get that corrected for next time.
And then on the year-over-year analysis, which I really appreciate having that helpful for us, I wondered if there was a correction needed there, if it just is ironically exactly the same that we are down $361,073.32.
That, I was just having, yeah, I'm off on that one. Okay. I'll provide that both for November 8th and November 15th, so December year after next one.
Do you know off the top of your head then if the ending balance is about $187,000 more this year than last year, or if that maybe the whole thing needs to be looked at?
The whole thing needs to be evaluated. Yep. So transportation fund started with $1,031,242.31. We had $2,186,83 cents worth of receipts. Expenses for the month were $82,191.39, leaving us an ending cash balance of $951,237.75. Last but not least is bus replacement fund. We started with $49,530.67. Receipts for the month were $672.87. No expenses for the month, leaving us an ending balance of $50,203.54. Any questions? Thanks for pointing those out. My apologies.
Since there is an issue Ted with the capital projects fund, she needs to make some corrections to that. Would it affect it if we don't approve it, do we approve it with her corrections?
You're better tabling that report.
So table the capital projects funds until the corrections are made and brought to us next meeting. Any other questions for now? In order to clarify that then, with the approval of claims, let's do the funds report separate. Let's just do them all separate, so that way we can differentiate those out, if that's okay with you, where any objections are doing it as we did standard, so we make sure we get it right. Okay. Is there a motion to approve on the financial report number one approval, claims 12,463 to 12,642 totaling $1,083,311.32?
So.
Motion made by Steve.
Second.
Second by Tom. All in favor of approving the approval of claims number one on the financial report, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Payrolls. Any questions for Val on payrolls? In that case, is there a motion to approve payrolls as given in number two in the financial report?
So.
Motion made by Jenny.
Second.
Rick beat you to it. Sandy, second by Rick. All in favor of approving the payrolls, item number two on the financial report, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. As far as the funds report, with the exception of the capital projects fund, I believe that's the only thing we need clarification on, correct? With the exception of the capital projects fund, is there a motion to approve the funds report excluding the capital projects fund?
So.
Motion made by Steve.
Second.
Second by Sandy. All in favor of approving the funds report with the exception of the capital projects fund, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Resolution to transfer unencumbered funds in win, we'll have that by the next meeting right now, that correction. Excuse me. Resolution to transfer unencumbered funds to the rainy day fund.
So before you tonight, and up on the screen as well, is a resolution to transfer unencumbered funds that we have from the transportation fund to the rainy day fund. So in our budget, we were given appropriations in the transportation fund, 500 and, oh, sorry, $900,000. And we have not used all of those appropriations, so we have some remaining appropriations left over. And so the two resolutions before you tonight for approval is the opportunity to take those unencumbered balances and expend them from the transportation and transfer them to, one is for, this one is for the rainy day fund, and then we also have an opportunity to replenish the repair and replacement fund that we use to purchase the new CNC machines from as well. So taking advantage of unencumbered funds where we have the cash flow balance available, and taking that opportunity to shift it to rainy day and repair and replacement.
It's best if I like it.
And I have one pass out as well.
While Val was passing those things out, I would just like to mention with the rainy day fund, one of the things is it's been a period of years since we've been able to put into the rainy day, so I want to commend everybody for having their eyes and ears on this. But one thing that Val and I are aware of, and we want to be very open about is the one unknown that we always face every year are being self-insured. And so we are trying in good faith to put this money away, kind of in a savings account. If we needed to access it, obviously we would have to come back to the board to ask for permission for that. So I think it kind of puts that checks and balances into place and allows us to put that money into savings in the hope that it stays there. But also want to point out that we feel that the budget's right. We feel that we've got everything accounted for. The one unknown is always that self-insurance. So if there's anything that we can see ourselves coming back for middle of the year, as soon as January rolls over, your help deduction, you have to come back over on that. So I think that'll be a period of time of growth in our self-insurance fund. But just to be fully transparent with the board, we believe that we can do this. We believe that those funds will remain in there. The one unknown is always self-insurance, and that would be potentially the only thing that we might need to come back to you on. All other things, obviously unforeseen. With the resolution for the repair and replace fund, just a reminder that we do have our old CNC machines out on the website right now. They are being auctioned. That closes on Monday, and it's a good faith effort to try to get as much back as we can on those. And when I left the office today, the bid was like at $1,505. It was some odd amount, but that seems to be going well, and that's also money that we're trying to generate and do good faith effort around that as well.
Would that go back into the rainy day, or the, excuse me, the repair and replacement funding?
Correction. If you have other questions.
Rachel, you had a chance to review this when we talked about the study session.
I looked at it at the, yeah, the study session.
The only problem is both resolutions declare this to be the county council of Rochester Community School Corporation. That should be at the board of Rochester Community School Corporation, so. The other balance of them is fine. You're not the county, yeah, you're not the county council.
We should discuss minimum power, I think.
That's already been voted on. So we want to table this as well?
I never.
No, you need, you just.
I think I amend it to the resolution.
Get a motion second, then ask, or then if someone will amend that, change what the board, that'll take care of it, but.
I think they're ready and have the corrected, printed for signature before we leave.
And we'll get them out over a year. It's more frauders and to close out and everything that we do that.
Okay, okay. Have we talked about the second motion yet, or we want to do that now? I'm not going to lump them together. We'll do them separately, but do you want to?
With the, yeah, I believe that I shared with the repair and replace, that's with those CNC machines and trying to, some of those, some of that was paid for through a grant that we received. The other part of it is being able to replace some of the funds with this transfer of money, and then the other would be in good faith, whatever we can get out of the old machines, which I don't, right now it's a 1,500, right around 1,500, but that would also go back.
Any questions for Jennifer Val on any of those? Any questions? In that case, number four underneath the financial report, the resolution to transfer unencumbered funds to the rainy day fund. So we want to do the motion second, and then with the, we want to make the change from the county council to the board. So the resolution to transfer unencumbered funds to the rainy day fund with the change from city county council to the board, is there a motion to approve number four under financial report?
So.
Motion made by Tom.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor of approving the resolution to transfer unencumbered funds to the rainy day fund with the change to board instead of county council, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. And then subject number five, I'm sorry, number five under financial report resolution for unencumbered funds to repair and replacement fund with the change of county council to board on the resolution, is there a motion to approve that?
So.
Give that one to Jenny.
Second.
Second by Sandy. Those in favor of approving the resolution to transfer unencumbered funds to the repair and replacement fund with the change from county council to board, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. I'd like to go back to the funds report real quick. Unless there is dissent or disagreement, we consider the capital projects fund tabled? Is there any, I just want to make sure for the record, there'll be, there's no dissent, we consider that tabled?
It's tabled.
Okay. I just wanted to do it the right way.
We can move, table.
We can. We don't need to vote unless somebody dissents, I believe. And then number six under the financial report, resolution to close 2017 year end.
So this one is resolution 2017 dash eight, resolution to close 2017 year end. I feel a lot better about this template because it's the same as last year. So looking forward on that one. It's a formality that gives me the permission to transfer available appropriations to some of the budget lines that may be over encumbered, but within the same program. It's a formality that gives me permission to do that process, and then in January, it also talks about how I will come back to the board in January and report on those transfers and how much went from here to there in each program of each fund. So just another formality as well. Any questions?
Any questions about for the resolution to close the 2017 year end? In that case, is there a motion for, to approve the resolution to close the 2017 year end?
So.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Tom. Those in favor of approving the resolution to close the 2017 year end, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Student and stakeholder focus. Donations, and of course, this always shuts off when I stand up, so. On the table to approve donations as presented, the Good News Club supplies for real teachers in office. The Good News Club supplies for Columbia office. An anonymous donor of 22 water bottles for RMS seventh and eighth grade basketball team. Sarah Dalton, five pairs of booths for student needs at the middle school. United Ministries, eight backpacks to RMS backpack food program. Treasures for the Heart Ministries, $150 to the food pantry. Treasures for the Heart Ministries, three bags of clothing for high school student. Anonymous $1,500 to RMS for Dan Bailey to use for anything he deems necessary in teaching or coaching at Rochester. Junior achievement hats, gloves, life kits, tissues for Columbia school. Kroger, $110.65 to Rochester Community School Corporation. Zulman Brothers Funeral Home, $100 for the Spanish club trip. Mister and misses, help me with the pronunciation there.
It's Guyan.
Guyan and Sheila Jochi, three copies of Finders Keepers up for the elementary and middle school libraries. First Christian Church, undergarments as needed to fulfill needs across the district. The American Legion host, $36, $200 Walmart gift card for a family getting need this Christmas for Columbia school. And I know we want to bring these back up again because we didn't have media coverage here at the last meeting, and this is very important, as do all the donations. Sponsors of Rochester Middle School, PBIS color run, Rapid View, R and R Visual, Artisty Printing, Steve Moore Agency, Shepherd Chevrolet, RTC Fiber Communication, First Federal Savings Bank, Skyline Builders, Fraunfelder Dental Clinic, Blue Print Construction, Edward Jones, Lance Nelson, and then added today, RHS Athletics, one half of the 50/50 drawing for the food pantry. The Hughes Family Clothing and Coats for RMS and student needs. The Blue Apple Circle Women's Church Group, hats and gloves for Columbia school. And the Ruth Missionary Circle Bethlehem Baptist Church, $100 to purchase items for the Columbia nurses office. Before we make a motion to approve these, as always, it never goes unappreciated. Thank you all so very much in the community, and I know the Senate, RTC, we put it in there, but thank you so very much for the donations, especially this time of year when it's getting colder and the weather's getting worse. Appreciate all that you give to our schools, and I can't thank you enough from the bottom of my heart for what you do.
And if I may add, there are so many unsung heroes that we can't possibly list them all. There are things going on that the principals know about or that we know about across the district. There was just a need that was announced at Rochester High School this morning, and it was sent out to the district, and instantaneously people rallied around that student, that family. We see that all the time across the district, and I think we could spend literally half of a board meeting just going through all of those, to all of those unsung heroes as well. A sincere thank you. People just, if there's a need, it's just instantly passed nodding their head. It's just instantly taken care of across the district, whether it's a personal donation, or something that you have at home, or you know somebody who knows somebody, but all of those need to always taken care of. So thank you.
I have a couple of questions. There are a couple here to the food pantry. Are we managing the funds for that as well? Could, okay.
Well, the donation, yes. And the $150 will be paid for the corporation fund since that check was written to the corporation, the donation fund that it, on board approval will go into. And then, and then we'll expend that as well, but as a whole.
So will pay Kids Bridge, or will, like, how, because I thought the funding for it was going to go through.
Well, part of it does go through Kids Bridge, but not nearly enough to keep the entire pantry healthy. So there are other students and needs. We just had a fire at one of the buildings, and one of the, I think it was Jason came to us and asked, and so that was, it goes above and beyond just the backpack program. It's helping to take care of those other needs as well. So this is the help offset.
I guess I was confused on how the accounting was going for that then. So we have a separate line item for the food pantry?
It's in a donation fund. So that donation fund isn't, it's held to this constraints of how much cash is in the fund of this donation. It's not within like the regular general fund, bus replacement, that we have to advertise our expenditures for a year in advance.
But you're saying that the needs for the food pantry go above what we, what is received through Kids Bridge. So where is that money coming out of except for these donations that are received here?
Then that's handled by, everything else is handled by Kids Bridge. But since this donation was to Rochester Schools, to the pantry directly, then we, the check was made out to Rochester Schools for the pantry directly, so we received that in, and we have a, literally a fund called donation for situations like these.
Okay. I'm hearing two different things, though. You're telling me what I kind of assumed that would be that it comes through Kids Bridge.
But for the whole scope of the, the program, the whole scope of the program, that is run through Kids Bridge.
Okay. So we aren't, as a Rochester Schools, paying anything out for the food pantry?
No, not at all.
But you just said, I was confused because I thought you said that it goes beyond what Kids Bridge could pay for, so that's why we have these extra funds that are coming in.
We operate the pantry on a, because of the transition from just a backpack program, it's more of a food pantry and backpack. So these funds help keep the food pantry of it going, and then we also get donations in for backpack programs. So they run in tandem. And it opens up our availability of what we can do.
Maybe I'm not asking it well, but I'm trying to, so we have, as a school corporation, have not paid out anything beyond what we've received in donations to the food pantry?
Correct.
Okay.
Another example is the high school, it's not here, the high school just had it food dry and brought in 1,500 cans of food to put into that. Not all of that is set aside specifically for the backpack program. Some of those are for families who need one principal's calls, and we have that come up.
Okay. So are we going to have as a line item in our budget, the food pantry, because what if we don't have enough donations that come in to cover that, or it will only be donation driven?
It would only be like donation driven.
Okay. Um, thank you. And then the Finders Keepers, there's even a question mark next to it. Do we know what that is, that's been donated to the libraries?
The question mark is part of the title.
Oh, okay. So I have a question about the Finders Keepers.
It's a, it's a book that Jason got his copy today when you were over. It's, it's a book that is written to, for the middle, or for the elementary and middle school programs, and it's just about different cultures, people being together, united, those types of things.
And at the risk of sounding like a Scrooge, my last question is, because when people donate to us, if I'm not mistaken, they can use that as usually a tax deductible expense because we are an nonprofit organization. Do we have a policy on, obviously when people donate, they can and have been, and I would guess should be specific in how they want those funds used, but it looks like we're crossing into another level here when we're having somebody who can write a check for $1,500 to a specific teacher. Do we have a policy on that? Is that something we are looking into? Is this something we want to encourage? Because obviously if a person just gave that check to that teacher, this is not anything against that teacher at all, then they could not deduct that off their taxes. But if they write it to us and then it goes through here, then they can.
That's a very good point, Jenny, and frankly, I was going to raise it if you didn't. That check has to come into the school corporation. If Mr. Bailey, as the teacher, wants to come in and say, "Let's use it for this," or "Let's use it for that," it's not his decision. It remains the board's decision and the administration's decision. So I don't know what the intent of the gift was, but you may want to look at that before, before you accept it, because if, if it was given as if he gets to make those decisions, then you can't accept it. If it was given to the school corporation saying, "That's a teacher. I want to make the decision, subject to the governance authority of the school," then that's, of course, something else. And anything he would use the money for has to be school, athletic, or otherwise related. It can't be a bonus to another teacher, or an aide who's been doing well. None of those things are permissible from the donations.
I mean, this is the donation we've gotten for a couple of years.
This will be the second year he's gotten it. They want to remain anonymous. I want to say who it's from. So he's gotten in, last year he bought murals that now we're finding out that this year we're going to have to use the donation to probably cover the cost of putting those murals up. I say murals, he's a social studies teacher. He bought a map that would cover this wall for his classroom that, I'll be honest, I could not buy for him with our school budget, so it's nice that he got that. And then as for his athletic purposes too, he bought, and they're handy things you put on that keeps your left thumb from being behind a basketball when you shoot it. And he lets the girls program use it, the boys program use it, and things like that. So it's been a positive thing. And Dan runs everything through Candy and myself, so.
Well, as long as the cash runs through Candy and you, then that's fine. And then the administration's making the decision. He comes with recommendations, much like donor advice, but you find, you know, a lot of the community foundation events. So it sounds like you're handling it properly, but Val or Mrs. Vantney do keep an eye on it.
So we don't need to do anything different with the wording on the motion to approve these? We just base it on the fact that Mrs. Van, or can we say Mrs. Vance, with the approval, Mrs. Vance of the building, or Mr. Hoz?
Yeah, yeah, you may want to say, just at the end of that, subject to administration approval.
Okay, and that leaves it open. She can delegate that to Mr. Hoz if she chooses or not.
Because it does say it's $1,500 to RMS, and that Mr. Bailey just makes the, just makes the decision, but he can't make the decision. It has to be the administration.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the donations as presented? And in addendum to that, the donation of RMS for Dan Bailey, $1,500 to use for anything he deems necessary with administrative, with administration's approval? Is there a motion for that motion? Motion is made by Rick.
Second.
Second by Sandy. All in favor of approving the donations as given, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Motion carries six to zero. Again, thank you to all the donors, each and every one, sincerely is appreciated. All to information and announcements, they're reading the various policies.
We just have two, and so if the board so chooses, these would be adopted tonight. We vote that way. Fifteen forty-three is a resetting of dates for non-renewal of administration contracts. And eighty-four seventy is prohibiting registered six or rileup vendors from being on school property, which aligns with the laws.
Is there a motion to approve the through reading of various policies? Number fifteen forty-three eighty-four seventy?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Steve. Second.
Second.
Second by Tom. Those in favor of approving the through reading of various policies, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. First reading of various policies.
So we're on to our next packet, and in this packet, as we've kind of had our, um, procedure, to start with ones that we really don't have a lot of decision-making to do on. They are either technical changes, sometimes even typographical kinds of changes, but also perhaps at times state law changes or federal law that we have to abide by. The first is by law, zero-one-two-two, it's a technical change. It redef, as our consultant says, more clearly states, the governance of the school board is having home rule. Twenty-five-ten, let me make sure that my notes go with the policies that are listed here. Twenty-five-ten, adoption of curricular materials. It's about making sure that we give guidance to our business manager and her department on how to prorate textbook refunds when a student withdraws from school. Fifty-two-hundred is attendance. These exempt absences, there are many reasons that a student may be not physically in the building, but still counted as present. So this is not about when they're sick or anything like that. That's if they are a page, if they are at the state fair. And now there's stipulations, but one of the changes is that there's a stipulation on how many days they can be at the state fair, and also if they, they have to be in good academic standing to be counted present at school, even if they're at the state fair, and there's a limit on the number of days. Also in there is something that we do make use of already in our practice. If, as a corporation, we say that a community organization is sponsoring something that aligns with our corporation goals, and they are, and our students are participating in that, they can be considered present at school, even though they're not technically on a school field trip. Obviously, if they're with the FFA somewhere, or they are with the Spanish class somewhere, that's a field trip, and they are counted as present at school. But this would be something like the Fulton County Youth Leadership Academy, that it is not run by our school personnel, but it does have our students that go, and they are not counted absent on those days. Kind of a long-winded explanation, but that is an attendance issue, and it's something we already have in practice, and it's not something that we can say, "We don't wanna do as state law says, we need to do it anyway." Let's see, fifty-four sixty-one. This is credit for courses completed before students enter grade nine, and we do have that. We have eighth graders and sometimes even seventh graders that are taking high school classes. This is literally changing the word, or making the word instructor in part of, of that policy. More clearly defines instructor. Then fifty-eight forty. This has a lot of corrections, but they are all changing the word gang to organization. So criminal organizations instead of criminal gangs. Eighty-five thirty-one, free and reduced price meals. This is again a technical change. Instead of referring to students as needy, they are referred to as eligible. We also need to make sure that our, our consultant reminded us, too, that we are going with the practice that we do have in policy, which is making sure that we have a second audit, second audit of applications. So it's not just one person who looks at our applications for free and reduced lunches. And that leaves eighty-five forty, vending machines. So there were, there's rules that have changed in how we can, when we can have vending machines on and so on, and what could be in them, at least for now, so that we are updating that policy.
Questions for Jenny on those policies?
I mean, those, I didn't check. Are those up on the website yet?
We usually do them the day after, so tomorrow will be excellent.
So if you want to read them.
We'll take the old ones down tomorrow. Some of those, you don't wanna bring any ones up.
Thank you.
Jenny, I have a question. Does the vending machine in Running Center, we go by the rules of the school buildings?
That's a good question. Yes. They have our high schools, I mean, we have our students here.
Any other questions, Jenny?
I tend to lose us something in translation when you go from grand gang to organization.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of various policies? Motion made by Sandy.
Second.
Second by Rick. Those in favor of approving the first reading of various policies, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries six to zero. Approval of bond counsel.
As we began looking at the bond that is needed for Riddle School and other projects across the district, it's important to us that we secure bond counsel, but in that decided to do as we've done with other situations in the district when Steve and Brad, as part of our financial committee, we went out and sought bank requests for proposals, what banks could do for us, we've seen it on the insurance side. So in good faith, we wanted to do that with our bond counsel as we move forward into the next round of bonds. And so we provided that at the study session, and it's, I don't know if there's a copy on it, but we gave the copy of the study session. I've got a couple of extra copies up here. Through that, and I also spoke with Ted mid-morning this morning about what Val and I had been speaking about. But with that, we received three requests for proposals. From that, we narrowed it down to two. Those two being Rose McKinnon Evans and Ice Miller. And then the difference, the differential between the two was minimal at best, if not at all in certain categories. In the past, our bond to bonds, gone with Ice Miller. Jane Herndon does a really, really good job. We have never had any trouble. They are always on point for us. They've answered questions. They help us through the audit period, all of those types of things. Ted also said that he thought that they were highly recommended as well, and he had the opportunity to work with Jane. So our recommendation is we move forward, we need to continue with Ice Miller as our bond counsel moving forward into 2018.
Any questions, Jenny?
I think Val brought all of those RFPs with her, their specific questions, and we need to go down into them.
We can go down Ice Miller.
And we had it, we, there were no concerns, there wasn't anything other than due diligence to make sure that we were doing what we needed to do, as this is a time of turnover and going into the new bonds and everything, just to make sure that we were doing our due diligence on our end as well. So no concerns, just making sure that the data was there to support it.
All right, just to clarify, the last two or three bonds we've done with Randy LaPola out of Baker, or not, of Barnes and Thornburg, but Jane has done here previously, has done with County and the Agri Public Library Building Corporation, just last one of their year shows.
Recommendation as for Ice Miller? Is there a motion to approve bond counsel of Ice Miller?
So moved.
Motion made by Sandy.
Second now.
Second by Steve. All in favor of approving Ice Miller as the bond counsel, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Scheduling a ten-twenty-eight public hearing.
So as we move forward, and I'm gonna lean on Ted and Rachel a little bit here, the next thing, as I understand it, is we need to schedule that ten-twenty-eight hearing where we would bring Kurt Fletcher in to explain and answer questions of the public in regards to that, and what that would look like for our taxes. We would also have Terry Thornsberry here to answer specific questions in regards to the Riddle HVAC, which is at the very top of our concerns, and we need to get that taken care of. And I'm gonna ask Jason here in just a minute to share what that's done for Columbia, because as we spoke today, he had some really encouraging words. Just, just how the process went, and knowing that we can, we can survive it. Luke will get riddled through it as well, but just what an incredible difference that's made. We've always had a lot of community support. They've asked good questions. They've always been right there for us. And so as we consider that ten-twenty-eight hearing, I would like to try and work with the board to schedule that in the evening sometime in the near future, so that the community would have a chance to come to listen to Terry, to listen to Kurt, to ask those questions. Maybe if I can get Jason and a couple of his teachers here to let them know what they've done for Riddle, and Luke and his teachers here as proponents and advocates for that. But what Val and I are learning and we're seeing across the state is that we feel a sense of urgency to do this, because other districts have already released their bids. We know for all my community schools, there's schools, two schools in northern Indiana that are releasing, and we wanna be right there in one of the front runners to make sure that we're still getting those bids of people who want work, not necessarily people who don't need the work, but put the bids in anyway. And that seems to be when the prices are, those bids come in higher than what we anticipate. So if we could schedule this, and one of the suggestions that I thought about, or Ted and I, as we were talking today, considered and bounced around, is as we're together on that January tenth for our study session, if we could just extend that day into the afternoon, early evening hours to have that then. If that's not appropriate, if that's too long of a day, if we could schedule a date where we can get the board together for the evening to hear that, that would be greatly appreciated.
You also have the meeting on the fifteenth, so you could possibly have a ten-twenty-eight, a half hour, forty-five minutes before the meeting starts.
We have something on the nineteenth, too. Can I just read the thing?
Oh, please, so we have the study session on the tenth, and a board meeting on the fifteenth.
Jenny, the board meeting will be on the twenty-second, though?
So the communication calendar is the fifteenth, and we can move that.
But if we- Isn't it usually, because I used to think it was the third Monday, and then I was told, no, it's the second to last Monday, since it's five Mondays. It doesn't really matter to me, but obviously we're just five days apart if we do a study session and a meeting. And I'm fine with doing it on the tenth as well.
Any issues with doing it on January tenth?
Ted, what are the legal advertising requirements for a ten-twenty-eight hearing? Do you know off the top of your head?
Don't know off the top of my head, no.
You just have to keep in mind that there are those closures for the holidays that will affect publication.
Well, yeah.
What do you throw off our timeline to wait an extra five days to do that? I know you wanna get it done as quickly as you can. Which would you prefer?
Think if we could do it on the tenth, that would help the process.
No issues with anybody doing it on the tenth, as long as we can do it and make sure our legal applications are done. Is there a motion to schedule the ten-twenty public hearing for January tenth? Motion made by Steve.
Second.
Second by Tom. All in favor of scheduling the ten-twenty public hearing for January tenth? Signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Approval and sale, I'm sorry, approval of sale slash destruction of surplus items. We have two on there? No, one more. Student desks in excess, they're supposed to be sold in as in, as is condition, correct?
As is condition. We wanna keep the best that we have in the district for, for future use. These are the kind of desk that we're using in the past where the seat is attached to the actual desktop. You can't, um-
Kinda don't fit in?
Nor does my son very well, but we're seeing so much across the district that we're going to the more group-oriented settings. We've got the desktops and the student-centered labs, those types of things. So we have literally across the district rooms and rooms of those types of desks that just simply aren't being used. So we wanna make sure that we hang on to the best of those, but again, are trying to clean out some areas. So these would be those that are as is, that need some work, that aren't necessarily in the best shape. And some of them I'm not sure why we hung on to for so long.
We have a Sears and Roebuck and, Sears Roebuck and Company refrigerator, model two-five-three-eight-six-eight-four-zero-eight-two, manufactured nineteen ninety-eight.
I think that's coming out of Riddle Schools. Is that air refrigerator that isn't heated or used anymore? Or has problems and concerns?
Is that the one out of the?
Does it kinda handle, I think it's out of the teachers' room. Nineteen ninety-eight.
That's what it's done, and so.
That has lived its life.
Yeah, it would be thirty years old. And then the sale or transfer, I'm still in high school. It is old. Sale or transfer recyclable property requests, and has continued to Han Office Chair Asset Take Number one-two-three-nine-four.
And we're proposing that we just scrap what we can from that and destroy the rest. It's not even, I can't see if anybody will let me do it, and it's not safe for somebody to use.
Any questions for Jenny on those surplus items? Is there a motion to approve the sale or destruction of the surplus items? So moved. Motion made by Tom.
Second.
Second by Steve. All in favor of approving the sale or destruction of the surplus items, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. Faculty and staff focus. And that is the personnel report. We have the intercession hiring regulations. Are those on here? Yes, it's all on. This one, oh, you want this one, I probably got there, right? For the personnel report, we have, for hirings, Kenzie Collins, the RMS Language Arts teacher. Reassignment, reassignment, Kyle Bernadas from Rochester Middle School, project lead the way teacher to Rochester Middle School Social Studies teacher. And retirements, we have Chris Cox, Middle School Social Studies, grade seven, effective end of the day November twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen. Family medical leave, we have Jody Cameron, Middle Instructional Assistant, December eleventh through January first, two thousand eighteen, back to work on January second, two thousand eighteen. For winter intercession, we have Felix Amandi for RHS English. Terry Scranton for RHS Mathematics. Extracurricular hirings, Taylor Shally for the High School Drum Auditorium Manager, effective immediately. Sports hirings, Jessica Hoffman for the Middle School Girls Basketball Assistant Coach. Dan Bailey is the sixth grade Boys Basketball Assistant Coach. Seth Wilson is a sixth grade Boys Basketball Volunteer. Phil Bowers is a sixth grade Boys Basketball Volunteer. And Aaron Cash and Aaron Leaf, Elementary Volleyball, to split the stipe in for Elementary Volleyball. And added today, for extracurricular hirings, Chad Thomas for RMS Geography D. Kyle Bernadas for RMS Student Council. Cheryl Willhite for RMS Yearbook. Dave Danhauser for RMS Band. Lisa McMillan for RMS Vocal Choir Sixth and Seventh. Lisa McMillan for RMS Vocal Choir Eighth, first semester at least. Kyle Bernadas for RMS Robotics. There's no one for the Rochester Middle School Art Club, and none for the FCC LA. Jill Weaver for the third grade Music Program Director. Lisa McMillan for the fourth and fifth grade Music Program Director. Leslie Strum for the Riddle Fifth Grade Student Council. And Tom, do we want to take Shirley out for you on that one? And then we will approve Charlie in a separate vote of the personnel report in order to honor Tom's wanting to abstain from that, unless there are any objections. So is there a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, did you like to add anything? Is there a motion to approve the personnel report with the exception of Shirley Schwank as the Director of the Riddle Running Club? So the motion is made by Steve. Second by Rick. All in favor of approv, and I didn't even put words in your mouth there, Tom. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report with the exception of Shirley Schwank, Schwank as the Director of the Riddle Running Club? Or, all in favor of approving the personnel report with the exception of Shirley Schwank as the Director of the Riddle Running Club, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries six to zero. In addition, is there a motion to approve Shirley Schwank as the Director of the Riddle Running Club? Motion made by Sandy.
Second.
Second by Jenny. All in favor of approving Shirley Schwank as the Director of the Riddle Running Club, please signify by raising your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Are there any abstentions? Mr. Schwank has abstentions. Motion carries five to zero. Superintendent's, please.
Um, I wanna thank Val and Jason and Oscar and Pat. We have auditor- I want to thank Val and Jason and Oscar and Pat. We have auditors in the district, and I know that they require a lot of extra time and effort and energy, and I know that each of them have met with the auditors, or when the auditors call, they expect that information to be there, and those meetings to happen. So I want to thank you for your help and your support and diligence in meeting with those auditors. Just wanted to share, our LED lighting project will begin at RMS this Wednesday, beginning at around eight o'clock in the morning. You'll see some trailers in the parking lot where we'll store those supplies. The goal is to have the middle school transferred over to LED lighting in Christmas break, right for the first of the year, so the first building will be taken care of. For those of you who would like to join, Dick Belcher will be in the district Thursday morning. He's going to present a check for us at nine-thirty, and then I offered him very much wants to go over to the middle school and see some of that unfold, and what some of the newer classrooms look like with LED lightings compared to the old. And so if anybody would like to join us, we're starting at central office at nine-thirty, but he's excited to see that unfold. And Oscar shared in one of his phone calls to me how excited he was in regards to the difference, he could tell the difference in the lighting and what the impact that was going to have in the building. And then Jason, if you wouldn't mind, just taking a few minutes to share thoughts on HVAC for Columbia as we move over to Riddle, and the good, the bad, the ugly.
I'd love to talk about VUVs and dampers and the control valves and all of that, that great stuff. You and I can discuss whether a VUV is, the difference between a VUV and a BA, I mean, but the units that we've put in, they're quiet. They don't, there's no smell to them. You know, the other things were, there was a lot of belt-driven parts that were just old, and, you know, sometimes they'd burn up in the middle of class, in the middle of the day. You'd have to evacuate a room, and not because they were on fire, but I mean because, you know, the smell and things like that. And, you know, this, this year, we've gone, we can control our temperatures, the air quality. I don't have any tests on it, but the air quality seems to be night and day difference. There's not the musty smell, the leaking pipes that we had in the building that would, you know, get condensation on them, and, you know, they're insulated now, and just the environment itself is very conducive to, you know, education and the learning. I think if you ask any of our teachers, they'll tell you the same. We do have a couple of VUVs that are giving us some trouble, and we're working on getting those balanced, and I'm not going to get into all the work that we're doing with those. And it's just standard stuff. When you put that many in, it's nothing major. They're working, but we're just trying to get them right. There's a lot, a lot of science involved in that, that, you know, having the amount of airflow, and you got them coming out of two different areas, they have to be equal, and if they're not, then it can adjust and change the whole dynamics of the unit. So we're working with the contractors. They're, they've been very helpful in helping us resolve those issues. And just in general, you know, when we, when we talk about the heating and the cooling, the building is comfortable and, and very, very good for, for our kids and our staff. So we've been very happy with the units and the work that those people have done.
And I would like to thank the community for their support, the board for their support, and Jason's done a phenomenal job of communicating with the teachers and the staff. That goes deeper than Jason. The teachers are really working to, as we transition in and out of classrooms and move around, so it's truly a joint effort by everybody. But in the end, I think that we've got a really good quality product that's going to benefit for us for years to come.
And the process itself, and Mrs. Vance just hit on it, I mean, it really boils down to the teachers being flexible, because we had to boot them out of their rooms, and, you know, they had new areas to clean up, not clean from the construction, but I mean, new storage areas, so things had to be shifted, and they were very flexible in that whole process and very supportive of it. And they, they deserve a lot of the credit for the smooth transition to that, so.
I have really been over there, but has, is Paradise still there, or has it been removed?
Oh, Paradise is there. It's, we're going to change it. We're going to start calling it the Rock. Call it, because it's kind of isolated, so it's kind of like Alcatraz. No, we're actually looking at, since we've still got it there, we're looking at multiple ways of using that. Right now, we're using it for some testing. We've built like a mobile computer lab out there, but in talking with some of my teachers here just in the last week or two, one of the challenges that we have when the weather is like it is, is outdoor recess and indoor recess, so we're looking at maybe using half of Paradise to create a room where teachers can take their kids for their indoor recess that has some pre-staged activities, some things that they can do with them, so it's not just always in their classroom. Because we have a lot of days where kids may not get out, depending on the weather, you know, so we're utilizing that since we've got it. We just, we try to do it in different ways, and we joke about the Alcatraz thing, different names for it, but it's still Paradise.
You could make the T3 farms out there, but they probably never come back.
Yeah, we don't want to do that. We don't want to do that. And if you ever would like to come over and see any of the new VUVs, I'd be happy to show you. It's a vertical unit ventilator, not to be confused with a horizontal HUV unit ventilator. Yeah, it's the, it's the big white thing that they, they put up that's going vertical now instead of horizontal, and, oh, yeah, and I'm going to tell you, and I don't, I mean, this is, if you want to see something that's impressive, go look at our boiler room. It looks like a naval ship. I mean, it is, it is spick and span. If I needed a place to stay, I'd sleep in there before I'd sleep in my office, because that, I mean, it's got new flooring. It looks like something out of like a Chevy plant. I mean, it's nice. They, it's, and you can see in there now. It used to be, it was like dark and moldy and dirty and oily. It was kind of, it was gross, and I'll tell you what, it's, it's nice.
They're really doing a good job with Brad Carter as well, teaching him how to run and control it, make those adjustments internally, so that we should be able to save on that and move forward as well. Part of what we paid for was his training to ensure that it lasts as long as we can get out of that, and he has really embraced that and is very, very good about learning that system, and is already starting to make adjustments on his own, so it's been a wonderful.
I used to get phone calls, probably every other weekend, for alarms going off in the boiler room, and I got one out when I was in a deer stand one time, and I'm like, okay, so I'm going to have to hop down from the deer stand, go check this alarm out. I haven't had any issues. I mean, it's, it's like, it's functioning the way it's supposed to. We don't get the alarms middle of the day, middle of the weekend, middle of the night, and, you know, it's, it's definitely an improvement over where we had. I wouldn't see any.
Great, everybody enjoy their holidays, safe travels.
Does the lease on Paradise expire at the end of school year?
It does, and we found out going through that it was going to cost more to get out of the lease than it was to continue to utilize the facility in the way that it was. Kudos to Terry and the guys, because they were into Columbia schools, they were able to move faster than they thought and get through it much quicker, so, but Val and I, as we drilled down on that road, it was just better to hang on to it than to pay the extra to get out of the lease, so we're trying to be creative in the ways that it's being used and make it productive while we have it. But it will be moved.
And Luke, you have so much to look forward to.
Oh, I'm pumped, you know, just touring those VUVs and HUVs in Columbia, super excited.
But we, we are seeing an honest evening, and Buddy's ready to call it an EDP, are the same things that were happening at Columbia, we're starting to hear reports on from Riddle, just seeing those concerns grow. So it's, it's time, and I think it was a good decision to go in Columbia first, because the needs were so much greater there at that point in time, but Riddle is starting to see an extreme what Columbia went through about a year and a half, two years ago.
And everybody may be tired, ready to go, but I am going to reiterate, nine-thirty at central office for Mr. Belcher. He was a very generous donation.
He was, and he's excited to come in, and when I invited him in, he is, it'll be a good morning to spend with Mr. Belcher, and he can see the building and see those things going on, so I'm eager to show that. Thank you.
And can we invite other people?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Give it to the public to come.
Absolutely.
Because it was a very generous donation, we're very thankful for it, as long as his philosophy and giving it really sound and helping.
I think about him every time I walk in.
You can see. Is there any public comment or question? Is there any other business before the board needs to be discussed? In that case, we'll consider the meeting adjourned. Merry Christmas and happy holidays.